Good evening. I'd like to call to order the virtual meeting of the Lakewood City Council, Lakewood, Colorado on October. Nine, five, eight, pound, pound. Once you're in, press star nine to request to speak. Feel free if you want to get that hand up right now. That's certainly okay. And we have just a couple of things of great importance on the agenda, but I also want to just acknowledge that we have some folks who this will be their last full regular city council meeting, and we're going to give them an opportunity to address council and the community before general business. And certainly, we're back here on the 17th, but tonight is that last regular meeting. So we look forward to hearing from those council members if they choose. Also, we'll acknowledge that Counselor Vincent is not with us. She will certainly try, but she's continuing to deal with a family emergency. So we want to keep her and her family in our prayers as they're having a challenging time right now. So Madam Clerk, will you please read the roll?
Paul?
Here.
Abel?
Here.
Rita?
Here.
Franks?
Here.
Harrison?
Wow, here, I'm in a different place. Yay.
Johnson?
My last here.
Labir?
Here.
Skilling?
Here.
Here.
And Vincent, you have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Please, if you'd join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Okay, again, before we go into public comment, we're going to go to that next. If you want to raise your hand, I will make sure you get you in the queue. And I read the statement of conflict of interest. All members of city council have the responsibility to comply with the terms of Charter 7.2B and excuse themselves from voting on any matter in which they determine they have a personal, financial, or business interest. The city council is empowered by Charter 7.2B to agree by unanimous vote excluding the member at issue to excuse any member of the council from voting on a matter in which they determine such member has a personal, financial, or business interest. Next up, we will now go to general public comment. So this is the point in the meeting where the public is invited to address the city council on items that did not appear on the agenda. All comments should be directed to the city council. I ask that all persons calling in observe the same decorum of a city council meeting held in person in the chambers. Again, that number is seven two zero seven oh seven two six nine nine, webinar ID nine two four five two nine four three nine five eight pound, pound. The clerk will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number. Once that is done, if you haven't given your name or address or ward, please do so, and we'll start your three minutes. When you're at 30 seconds, you'll hear, and when your time is up, you'll hear that again. So Madam Clerk, if we could begin that portion of the meeting, let me get my timer going, please. Okay.
First caller, Lenore Hurskovitz.
Good evening, Ms. Hurskovitz. If you just want to give us your ward or address, we'll get you going.
Lenore Hurskovitz, Ward one, but I do want to tell you, there's some technical difficulties first on my iPad. I can only see one person at a time. So I'm not seeing the entire, the entire council. I can see you on the TV screen, but not on the iPad. So I don't know if other people are having the same problems.
Okay.
Can I, you can begin my time now if you'd like.
Please.
Lenore Hurskovitz, Ward one. Good evening, council. The mayor mentions decorum at the beginning of our council meetings. Sadly, such decorum has been lacking in the Ward one campaign. I will preface this by saying I am biased. Both Counselor Abel and Kathy Kentner are close friends of mine, and because of these relationships, I know them better than most, both professionally and personally. Both are honest and honorable individuals. Neither have violated any law or code of conduct in the city of Lakewood. They have never lived together nor shared finances, but in Ward one, facts don't matter if it can help you win a race. I'm not naive. I know elections and politics are a dirty game, but in Ward one, it's become a blood sport. Instead of running on a platform focused on constituent needs, Ms. Kentner's opponent has chosen to use character assassination, misinformation, and outright lies on her road to a hoped-for victory. She claims she wants to decrease the pervasive divisiveness in this city, but how could she achieve that when her campaigning stresses vilifying anyone who doesn't share her well-publicized party affiliation? City council is supposed to be a nonpartisan body that shares a commitment to represent all constituents equally. Now, not all of you supported the growth initiative, but you have to admire Kathy's strength and determination for withstanding two years of court battles to bring this issue to the voters. She did this as a private citizen responding to public concerns about growth, all the while maintaining her full-time job as a Lakewood teacher. Now, that's the kind of person I want representing me, one who perseveres against overwhelming odds to seek solutions for the entire community. Kathy is an experienced independent thinker who will be accessible to her constituents. She will fight to find answers and solutions to their concerns, even if it means challenging the establishment. She will not rubber stamp policy. Instead, she will research all the facts before casting a vote. While working on the growth initiative, she was able to organize and motivate a politically diverse group of volunteers to achieve a common goal. She endorsed, she is endorsed by the many people she has helped over her years of activism. I am proud to call Kathy my friend and hopefully the next city counselor for Ward one. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Next is Eva Frickle.
Evening, Ms. Frickle. If you give us your address or ward, we'll get you going.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Eva Frickle, and I am a 20-year resident of Ward four. I spoke two weeks ago about favoritism and nepotism in local politics and cited the Council of Europe's Code of Conduct. I sent that to all of you by email. In that email, I asked that city council members who will be on council after this election to promote transparency in recruitment and promotion processes by positively affirming that regardless of who wins the coming election, they will not find themselves in a conflict of interest. The voters of Lakewood are entitled to all pertinent information to be able to make an informed choice about whom to elect to represent them. I've only had two responses. As outlined in my hypothetical example, if a council member has intimate relations with a candidate for an appointed position, the honorable ethical choice would be to disclose the matter and remove oneself from the committee. Officials would not, if truly honest, use the matter to gain advantage for themselves, their family, et cetera. Even if the relationship is that of a council member finding unexpected happiness later in life, it still violates standard ethical practice if they vote for the appointment of a person to any committee, board, or other advisory group to the council without a bare minimum acknowledging the relationship, and they should recuse themselves. It is particularly egregious that the person who benefited from this appointment is now running to represent a Lakewood ward and is touting the experience they gained on that committee as a reason to vote for them. When it comes to finding a partner in life, I wish them the best of luck and all the happiness in the world, but their relationship should be acknowledged and should not allow them to hold undue influence of the council of this city. Both parties have been asked numerous times in public forums to address the nature of their relationship. Neither have given a direct answer. Their evasive responses are highly hypocritical, given they both claim to be transparent and have integrity. My comments on ethics in local government have nothing to do with upholding the patriarchy. In fact, quite the opposite, demanding a light be shone on nepotism and favoritism in appointments is part of tearing down the old boy's network. Positions of power must be filled transparently through merit and the democratic process, not nepotism and corruption. Those in positions of authority, as with Caesar's wife, should not only be above suspicion, but avoid even the implication of impropriety. The most important asset for any leader is their credibility. Once lost, it is very hard to regain. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Clerk?
Next is Joshua Comden.
Good evening, Mr. Comden. I think you're calling from Ward one, so just go ahead and get started. I'll start your time.
All right, wonderful. I'm calling from Ward one, and I am calling about the usual issue of trying to get a civilian review board for the Lakewood Police Department. And I'm trying to reference the policy of the Lakewood Police Department, specifically three, one, zero, four, B, eight, nine, and 10. Here, it says, if during the course of an administrative investigation, the investigator reasonably believes that a crime may have been committed by an employee, the professional standard section commander shall be notified immediately. Then, at the discretion of the chief of police, the professional standard section commander shall notify the appropriate district attorney's office that a crime may have been committed by an employee within the DA's jurisdiction. So the problem I have with this is that it's all internal, even when there may have been a crime, and that it is up to the discretion, exactly the words here, discretion, by the chief of police, that they are the ones who will be notifying the DA. This is not an independent investigative authority. It's all closed and internal. So this is the number one reason why I think we should have a civilian review board. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Next, Madam Clerk?
Next is Sarah Claus.
Great, Ms. Claus, if you give us your address or ward, we'll start your three minutes.
Hi, my name is Sarah Claus, Ward one.
May I start? Yep, please.
My last name is familiar in this room, as my partner John Claus has been continually calling in and asking for accountability from city council. Don't get me wrong, John Stiles is not mine. I don't like his wording or the personal digs he does. And as a resident of Lakewood, though, each week I follow your actions and lack of actions. I have yet to hear candidate Kentner or Counselor Abel speak to their personal relationship that is overlapping with professional responsibilities. Are they allowed to have a relationship? Sure. Does this compromise their municipal duties? Maybe or maybe not, but this is not for them to privately decide. The city's integrity is at stake. You keep lying, Charlie, by your silence and your omission. If you and Kathy are not willing to be on the up and up, how are we supposed to entrust you to conduct any business with integrity? Like how you pretend to advocate for a Maple Grove reservoir path, and there's no evidence of it. And when I responded to Kathy, to Kathy's text to meet with me, and to her request to meet with me, I was met with silence. And it wasn't just about anything. I reached out to ask Kathy to denounce and address the person who's physically threatening my family in her campaign's name, a person living a literal stone's throw from her front door. And she had the gall to use it as a bargaining chip to talk about mutual social media concerns. And then, when I responded to clarify, she was radio silence. The high road, as she puts it, no, it's not about avoidance. The high road's not avoiding a discussion or questions or my family. And excuse my language, but the high road is not fucking avoidance. Be accountable. What's your responsibility and what isn't? You're not responsible for protecting my family in every instance. You are responsible for decrying the egregious actions that happen under your name. Instead, you shrug and say there's nothing you can do. As a mom and a former public school teacher myself, I couldn't imagine being so unresponsive to a plea like mine. And we're supposed to elect you to represent us? What the hell? Kansas City Council and candidates, stop passing the buck. This election isn't happening to you. You're not the victims of this. Say for Counselor Harrison, last meeting, no one has spoken directly to this, and your silence speaks volumes. Counselor Springsteen, when you were questioned about the integrity of your dealings last week, your defense came down to, but I think other people lack integrity worse. Really? Be on the right side of history, uphold the dignity of your positions, stop making a laughingstock out of our city council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak for general public comment?
No other hands are raised.
All right, we'll go ahead and close general public comment. There's no executive report this evening.
That's mayor, pardon me.
Yep.
I just wanted to make one announcement, and that is, the next meeting is indeed November 22nd, and that meeting will be held in person in our council chambers, barring no big COVID spike. So we'll let you know as it gets closer, but that's the plan. November 22nd, we'll be meeting in person again. Thank you.
Great, thank you. My apologies, I didn't know there was a report. All right, next up is the consent agenda. However, I'll disperse with actually the whole language, because it looks like it's just one resolution on the consent agenda. So I'll open the public hearing on that resolution, and please ask the clerk to read that into the record.
Item seven, resolution 2021-49, approving the 2022 operating plan, 2022 budget, and the reappointment nomination of Sonia Estes, and the appointment nomination of Jack Heckinger to the Board of Directors for the Alameda Corridor Business Improvement District.
All right, is there anybody who wishes to comment on this resolution, resolution 2021-49? Just for reference, this was on the agenda a couple of weeks ago, along with the West Colfax, and this was pulled to make a couple corrections. Do you not see anybody with their hands up, council? Any questions or comments? Mayor Protem, may I please have a motion?
Mayor, I move for the adoption of the resolution, which is included in the consent agenda items introduced into the record by the city clerk.
Please have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Motion second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. The passes, what are we, tonight? Nine, 10, nine? Nine ayes, zero nays. Thank you. Sometimes it's hard when you have the Brady Bunch screen. Okay, next up is the big one, which is unique in that it has two public hearings and must be passed by November 1st, and that is our budget and must be a balanced budget. So with that, we've had lots of presentations, and I will ask the clerk to please read item eight into the record.
Item eight, second public hearing ordinance O 2021-26, adopting a revised budget for the year 2021 for the city of Lakewood, Colorado, and further adopting the annual budget for the city for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of January 2021 and ending on December 31, 2021, estimating the amount of money necessary to be raised by levying taxes for the year 2021 to defray the costs of municipal government of the city of Lakewood, Colorado for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2022, and ending December 31, 2022, and estimating the amount of money to be derived from other revenue sources setting forth the appropriations of each fund.
Thank you. Well done. So before we go to public comment, let's have a presentation. It looks like our chief financial officer, Ms. B. Orkland, is with us. She has a presentation. I think. Yes, getting a thumbs up.
Good evening. Yes, you're correct. There's a presentation. Okay, so this evening, first of all, Ryan Diamond is going to be putting up the presentation, and why he's doing that, I will begin. This evening, I'll be providing a high-level review of the 2021 revised and 2022 proposed budget. The more extensive budget reviews that you've seen before, the videos are on Lakewood Speaks and the Lakewood website. Next slide, please. And the next slide. So first, we'll start with looking at revenue by fund for the total city. The funds are grouped by general, capital, enterprise, and special revenue. The first bar shows the 2019 actuals, then we have the 20 actuals, the 21 adopted budget, the 21 revised budget, and then the 2022 proposed budget. So for the general fund, which are the blue bars, you can see the decline in revenue from 2019 actuals to 2020 actuals of approximately $9 million, which is actually better than the forecast decline. And this was primarily due to sales tax recovering more quickly than estimated. You can also see the general fund 2021 revised budget is approximately $21 million higher than the 21 adopted budget. This is primarily due to receiving the funds of the $10.8 million from American Rescue Plan and the estimated $10.2 million recovery of sales tax. The proposed 22 general fund revenue is approximately the same as 2021 revenue, because we expect to have the second half of the American Rescue Plan Act funds of $10.8 million. And the sales tax is forecasted to maintain at that higher level, but is not estimated to continue to grow beyond the 2019 level. The capital funds, which are the red bars, have continued on the same sales tax revenue trend as the general fund. The enterprise funds, which are the green bars, have stayed approximately the same. For the special revenue funds, which are the yellow bars, you can see an uptick in the 2020 actuals due to the $12.3 million for the CARES Act. The 2021 was also revised up from the run rate for large grants. Next slide. Next, we'll talk about expenses. This is slide displays how all city funds are spent by department. You can see that the police, public works, and community resources are all approximately a fourth of the total spending, and the remaining fourth is non-department information technology, and then other departments. So moving on to staffing, staffing is continually being assessed and evaluated. With maintaining such a large number of unfunded positions, it was determined that staffing has become too lean. The proposed budget includes adding back resources to provide more support for core services to residents. The police department attrition will continue to be backfilled through police academy recruits, with class sizes varying due to the level of attrition and the number of applicants. The proposed budget has a request to fund 13 existing unfunded positions. There's also a request for two new positions for body worn cameras and two positions for traffic infrastructure for public works, which would be funded by the Tabor Fund. There is a request for one position for a neighborhood support team, which would be funded by the general fund. Two positions for sidewalk improvements from the capital fund, and one position for an ADA compliance from the workers' compensation fund. A conservative position is still being maintained by retaining the 35.5 A conservative position is still being maintained by retaining the thirty-five point five unfunded positions to ensure the city is only adding back resources that are essential to services provided. Lakewood used the twenty twenty reduction in resources as an opportunity to reevaluate what is truly needed to provide the core services to Lakewood residents. Additionally, with the unknown factors and the economic, um, the economy that continues to affect the pandemic, the effects from the pandemic, it is important to remain flexible with staffing. It's also recommended a three percent COLA increase in Q four for twenty twenty-one and a three percent merit increase in Q two of twenty twenty-two for existing staff. In the short term, the American Rescue Plan Act revenue is being used for revenue replacement. As I mentioned, Lakewood received ten point eight million dollars in twenty twenty-one and will receive ten point eight million dollars in twenty twenty-two. As the staff review the needs of the city, it became clear that infrastructure maintenance and replacement has been underfunded historically and is the largest need in the city. As this slide, um, on the slide, you'll see the recommended uses of these funds as well as an additional ten million dollar investment that is recommended to be funded by general fund twenty twenty expense savings. The projects are deferred maintenance and equipment replacement, sidewalk construction and maintenance, finance and HR system replacement, maintenance campus modifications and rehab, radio system upgrades and equipment replacement, civic center fire and safety improvements, and miscellaneous. The miscellaneous items are video camera infra- infrastructure, homeless navigator vehicles, renewable energy study for city buildings, budget resiliency plan project, and ADA compliance. These all add up to an investment of thirty point seven million dollars and are proposed to be invested over five years. Next slide, please. For this slide on sales tax, let's look at the pie chart first. The inside percentages show you the makeup of our sales tax. For example, besides all other, the largest groupings are restaurants, electronic shopping, and department stores. The outside percentages are the change from July twenty twenty-one compared to July twenty twenty. This shows the sales are down for car dealerships and telecommunications, and sales are up for all other categories. The large growth areas are electronic shopping, hotels, department stores, home improvement, and all other. So now moving over to the left-hand side of the slide, you'll see the month-by-month comparison for twenty twenty-one versus twenty twenty year-to-date. You can see that the first two months of the year were still showing a decline. This time period was pre-COVID for two for twenty twenty. Then in March, sales started showing an increase compared to last year. Year-to-date, we are up sixteen percent and seven point eight million dollars compared to twenty twenty. You can see that the increase peaks in May and has started to come back down. This puts us at a trend of seven point five percent total year increase over twenty twenty and close to the two thousand nineteen levels. Once Lakewood gets back to the two thousand nineteen levels, we're forecasting the growth to level out and grow at a pace of point six percent, which we discussed in the last presentation. This slide gives you an example of property tax for a home value of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. As you can see, the city gets the smallest portion of this revenue, which is five percent. However, property tax is the largest or the second largest source of ongoing income from this for the city and are projected to be twelve point seven million dollars in twenty twenty-two, an increase of eight point two percent over the twenty twenty-one adopted budget. So moving on to the general fund balance. Um, this is showing you the twenty twenty balance and the forecast through twenty twenty-six. The starting point of twenty twenty fund balance was reset to forty-one point three based on a better revenue and less spending. The additional fund balance in twenty twenty-one revised is primarily due to the American Rescue Plan Act. Now we'll talk about Tabor, otherwise known as the taxpayers' bill of rights. Tabor is a Colorado constitutional amendment that limits government revenue increases to inflation plus a small growth factor. In two thousand eighteen, voters elected to allow the city to keep the revenue collections collected in excess of the Tabor limit through twenty twenty-five. This shows there what was historically refunded and what was transferred to Tabor funds. So the blue bars are what is showing is was refunded and the orange is what has been retained. So Tabor funds will go back to the taxpayers as of twenty twenty-six, and we will need to identify other fund sources for these programs. To wrap things up, I will review what we've done during this budget process. We received great input from the Budget Audit Board from January through July on addressing the revenue expense gap and making the budget book more usable for the reader. We also got feedback from city council in the first half of the year on options to address the revenue expense gap. Brian Diamond, our budget administrator, coordinated the inputs and discussion with the departments. We had seventeen budget meetings with the departments in July and August. The Budget Audit Board reviewed the budget in September, and then we had the detailed presentation during the study session on September twentieth. The first reading was on October eleventh and the second and final reading this evening. I'd like to thank the Budget Audit Board, city council, the city manager, the department directors, staff, and last but not least, Ryan Diamond. I will now turn it back over to the mayor uh, for questions and discussions. We did not receive any additional questions since the first reading.
Thank you. Nice condensed presentation and just to remind folks that you've answered questions throughout that have come into into play. So with that, I will open the public comment portion of the second public hearing of the budget. And let me get my clock ready. So again, that's the same process, three minutes. You will hear a bell at thirty seconds and your time will be up. Um, if you'd like to participate. Madam clerk?
Joshua Comden.
All right. Good evening again, Mr. Comden.
Hi, yeah, um, I, I really like this neighborhood support team that we talked about before. But something, something interesting I thought about when thinking about it, because I remember that it was mentioned that it would be go under the like Public Works Department or something like that. And it seems like the the neighborhood support team has a lot of the same skills that the homeless navigator has. It's different resources and different all of that, but there's still, you know, very strong interpersonal skills that someone must have to take this position. So I, I just felt kind of like weird why the homeless navigator is under, I think, the police department where the neighborhood support team is going to be under something like Public Works or something. When I think the neighborhood support team, I think it was talked about that it's like supposed to be conflict resolution between neighbors without having to bring in code enforcement. So in a way, it is almost like um, kind of an alternative responder program for the Lakewood Police Department. Where the homeless navigator is really trying to find resources for people that are. And it just, it just seemed weird that they were in two, they would be in two different departments where it would seem like I think they would both be good in something like the Public Works Department or public services, something like that. This is my only comment. I know it doesn't change anything now, but I just wanted to make it clear. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody else?
No other hands are raised.
All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment. I would again like to acknowledge the Budget and Audit Board chaired by Counselor Bida and the members are counselors Harrison and uh, Labir. And so thank you for your time as well as our citizens who have engaged. And I'm not sure, just to address the question, I'm not sure if Ms. Hodgson has an answer. I will tell you, you know, a lot of these things are new, especially with our uh, this new proposal, and I think things will probably ebb and flow as we learn. We started with mental health folks uh, in twenty seventeen as coresponders, and we've added police or homeless navigators as well as the law enforcement assisted diversion. So all these things, I think, continue to evolve and change, and we learn as we go and try to find the best ways to react to the community. But I don't know, Ms. Hodgson, if you have anything to add to that.
Um, yes, thank you. I think, I think that's a fair description. Um, this is really our first year attempting this program, and it will be put in the planning department. The planning department has a lot of interaction with neighbors, with um, different community groups, with HOAs, et cetera. So the idea is that this neighborhood support team would get to know the neighborhoods and start to understand what some of the issues might be in a real proactive way. So that's the reason this person and this team is being assigned to the planning department.
Thank you. And council, you will remember also, uh, Counselor Bida had brought forth something, first reading, as well as myself related to um, um, some things moving forward. And I guess maybe we would probably make a motion and and bring this to the table. Then we can have more discussion and certainly any other questions. So Mayor Protem, will you make a motion on the budget, please?
I move for the adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-six on second and final reading.
Second.
Motion second. Counselor Bida, do you want to talk about, uh, it's really a request basically for consensus?
Uh, yes, thank you, mayor. The request that I that I made was that we would have our staff request for our staff to take a little closer look at uh, putting some sort of a uh, police station or outstation in the Belmar Belmar neighborhood. Um, due to the burdening crime rates that we've seen, especially on car thefts and car burglaries, we get a lot of concern and complaints from our residents there. So one thought was maybe we could, by having an increased uh, presence there, uh, through the use of a actual station there, uh, might help. So we're asking that the the ask basically is that the, uh, council recommend that the staff continue to look into that. This has come up late in the process, and so we understand we can't really address it at this point in the budget process, but at some point next year in the revision, as we look at revisions, which we typically do, um, this would be an item to look at. So that's the request. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Franks and Counselor Springsteen to that request.
Yes, Mayor Paul, I just wanted to add for staff that we're going to be kind of looking into that. If there's a way to, um, as the data is being analyzed, to look at crime stats, you know, maybe across the entire city and see, uh, you know, i- if there's what those opportunities might look like. Obviously, um, you know, we've us, I think all of us through social media have seen uh, the uptick in, uh, you know, things, car thefts and and just general petty crime and that. And so I think that certainly I think I'd like to revisit this, uh, with some higher data points that would be citywide. So I just wanted to add that into the discussion. Thanks.
Counselor Springsteen?
Well, I guess my question on this all along has been, um, and I actually agree with Counselor Franks, um, that we need to look at uh, rates and statistics across the city. I don't know why uh, Belmar should have some kind of favoritism as opposed to other parts of the city, because I certainly think you know, in parts of Ward Three, Ward One, Ward Two, where we're hearing gunshots throughout the night and things like that, why, why wouldn't a substation there make sense? Um, and so I, I think this creates a need for more discussion. Um, you know, I was gonna bring this up generally with our budget, but this kind of plays into this issue, which is, um, you know, I, I was looking at an article by Chase Woodruff in Newsline where he said that Lakewood's general fund and per capita figures for police expenditure stand out. And uh, one of the quotes in that article was by a um, CU Denver sociologist who studies police budgets and said there's little evidence that spending more on policing helps reduce crime rates. And the article also points out that Lakewood has Colorado's um, the second largest police budget in terms of percentage of general funds in twenty twenty uh, for cities over thirty thousand people, only behind Centennial, and there's many, many cities on that list. And then that police expenditures per capita in twenty twenty um, were number three after Grand Junction and Englewood. Uh, and of course, our own mayor is quoted in this um, article. And one of the things he says is that our, our values reflect what um, the community wants and public safety is a big part of that. I think it's been an educational opportunity for us to talk to the community about uh, what we do and how we do it. Um, and that we're always self-examining. And, and so, you know, when you have, for instance, Joshua Comden calling in week after week, asking for us to examine a civilian review board. And there is absolutely no response to uh, the community on things like that. I don't really know how any of that is true, but at it, at any rate, I would just question um, you know, adding uh, things to the police budget without doing it in a way that is equitable across the wards and equitable um, across parts of the city that might need it more than others. So that would be my comment. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Johnson and Counselor Abel.
Thank you. Um, I believe that there is a police uh, outstation at the Mills Mall. Is that correct? Right. And then one that's about Sixteenth and DePew. Is that right, Kathy?
Yeah, that's not really a police station like at the Mills. They're all very different. The the little facility um, over off of about Sixteenth and DePew is over by the Whitlock Center, and that's a place for um, the agents to come to write reports and to, uh, so they don't have to go all the way back to the station at, um, over, over by the municipal center, the police station.
Okay. And do we have, I understand that there is one across the street from Iber in the new um, apartment facility there. Is that right? It's by next to Pearson Grove, and I'm not, it's the Housing Authority there, the one that Tammy Fisher's involved in.
Well, there's certainly not a formal police substation there.
There are. But there was.
Not that I, not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, okay, then I might have it wrong because I thought that there was one. Okay. Thanks, Kathy.
And Counselor, if I might, we have, we actually have formal kind of substations and informal. So Mount Air Church has a location located within it that's open to the police department to come in. So Mount Air Church has a location located within it that's open to the police department to come in and use the restroom, write reports, and it's good to have that presence in the neighborhood. So we do have these kind of spread throughout. And I think Counselor Bida's idea was there was already this working, and there was a conversation about having something in place at Belmar. And the idea was not to let that fall by the wayside. Certainly, it is a larger council conversation if we want to look at more at the substation model that has true bona fide substations throughout the community. I think Arvada has one of those, for instance, or something like that. But we just have this mix, and that I think is where this was born from, that conversations were already started. And to make sure that we continue this with Belmar, because they were being helpful in saying they wanted to come to the table and allow for this opportunity as well.
I guess I was just trying to point out that, you know, there are other areas where I think that they're valuable and kind of in support really of looking at Belmar.
Absolutely. I don't disagree, Ms. Hodson.
I'm sorry, and I, I just want to clarify what I had said. So there are two other areas or facilities where the police are able to go in and write reports. And it's not just the one near the Whitlock Center. There are two at the West, at the Metro West complexes. So it may very well be the one you're speaking of, Counselor Johnson, but I, I was thinking you're asking about a more formal substation, and, and that isn't, that, that isn't the case. You know, these men and women also use the restroom facilities, which is very convenient as well. So.
I understand. Thank you.
Counselor Abel, and then Counselor Bida, bring us home.
Thank you. This would be more from Ms. Hodson, I guess, but we generally base the budget on our frequent community surveys are not frequent, but regular community surveys. I haven't seen one lately. Did the pandemic get in the way of it? And will we be seeing one soon?
Um, that's accurate. The pandemic did get in the way, and there are activities to, or work done to get another one started soon. Oh, that wasn't, that wasn't good grammar, but what I meant to say is yes, one is coming.
Close enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bida.
Thank you, Mayor. So this ask that I, that I have brought forward basically has would have a number of components. One would certainly be to look at the uptick in crime in, in Belmar in particular, and see whether or not it justifies a, a substation. I believe that the, the numbers would, would in fact justify something like that. So that would be one component. Another component would be just exactly, what would the cost be? And what would the, the model be for this substation? And, and, and that's part of the idea. There's a likelihood that the ownership in Belmar would, would be contributing potentially to this, to this substation. So that would have a financial impact. And it also may be that we wouldn't need a full a full substation like we do, let's say, in, you know, over at the, at the Mills, because this is, it's a different situation here, but nevertheless, we've got high-density residential's right there. And you have that combined with, with a, a lot of, you know, retail business and so forth. They go on in sometimes into the night. And, and so it has some unique needs there that you can't just compare to other parts of the, of the city. And so what I'm asking for basically is to ask staff to move forward and take a look at what would be appropriate here. And maybe the answer is nothing. Maybe the answer is leave it like it is. I don't know. But I think there's a, there's, there's an issue there. There's a lot of people asking for us to do something in Belmar. And so this is one possibility. And if, if staff does their study and comes back and makes a recommendation, then I think that's what we go with. So all I'm asking is for a little deeper study on this. That's all.
Yep. Thank you, sir. So I concur and support that going forward. So is there consensus for that to, to go forward in, in that regard? Okay. So I am seeing consensus that will move that forward. Thank you, Counselor Bida. Okay. And the other one that was similar is something that I've talked about, and that simply is consensus to direct staff to convene key stakeholders as to best direct the proceeds from the 2021 Westland Town Center parking lot sale to benefit that immediate area. And I think we talked about that the first reading. So I'd just like to see if there's consensus for that to, to see what the community wants with those dollars as well as the property owner. Counselor Abel? You're, you're unmuted.
Sorry, and those were such wise words. You, you referred to the area. Can we define what area it will be spent in? Also, who will determine where the revenues go? Will it be economic development staff, council?
So I
Improvement District?
No, I, I think this would, the way I would envision this, it's a city facilitated process that would include the neighborhood associations surrounding it and the property owner and potentially WCCA, right? I mean, everybody, that's kind of a part of that. But the dollars would go to that immediate area is, is what I would like that conversation to be. And I think that would come back to council, because we just don't know what or if or how any of that would look like. But at least tries to keep those dollars where they were recovered.
I, and I, I understand your phrasing of that immediate area to be the Westland Center and its fringes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, direct fringes. Thank you very much.
Yep. Yeah, certainly don't want to see mission creep on this one. Those dollars are important, important to those neighbors, and they've been engaged for a long time as to wanting to see something. So.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. So is there consensus on that? Okay. All right. So we have consensus there. Are there any other questions or comments related to the budget, the motion at hand? All right. With that, seeing none, there's a first and a second on a very big item, and I ask that you please cast your votes. That budget passes eight ayes and one nay, the nay being Counselor Springsteen. Okay, so now, of course, you know, thank you to all the folks that were involved and and so many folks that worked hard in all the different departments and community members and council for getting us through this process. Keep in mind, we have general business, but before that, I'd like to open the floor to our council members who this, this is their second to last real official meeting. And then, once we adjourn, remember, we have to go into an LRA meeting. So I know it's a little bit clunky, but we'll go through this regular meeting, and we looked at, can we suspend this and go into LRA? And so we'll just go through this whole meeting and keep in mind, just hang around for the next phase. So with that, we have Counselors Johnson, Labir, Skilling, and Harrison, who are going to be winding down their service. And so certainly want to thank them for everything and give you the floor. It's like Counselor Johnson, you're unmuted, so you must be ready to go.
Thank you. Well, I want to thank Kathy Hodson and her staff for all you do for Lakewood. You are hardworking and dedicated. Lakewood is fortunate to have you. Working in today's environment is difficult. I have five wishes for the council who remain in their position. And to be clear, these are not the five wishes that are the same as the five wishes brochure that you may fill out before you die. So let's make sure that, that we all understand that. My first wish for you who are remaining is, number one, unfortunately, our current council has drifted into a culture that is not healthy for us, the staff, and most importantly, the city and citizens. We are examples of leadership for others to model. It is always important to remind yourself of that. We can disagree without being disagreeable. I believe in us and know we could have done better. The good news to me is that the counselors who will remain have an opportunity to start a fresh new culture, a new beginning for council. Please not only reach out to the new counselors who will fill the vacancies, but to those of you who will remain on council. Time for healing and a new beginning. I personally know how it feels to be marginalized. My second wish, many good ideas come before us that have good merit. Unfortunately, we have devolved into the trap of voting yes or no based on the person presenting the idea rather than the merit of their issue. Think of decibel levels for the noise ordinance. Ultimately, the citizens pay the price. My third wish for you, ask to hear all sides of issues. It is really our duty to be as knowledgeable as we can before we vote. Expect that of yourself. We vote on serious public policy issues, sometimes without really taking the time to listen to all information. There is always value in all perspectives. My fourth wish for you, be mindful of the money that is behind anything. Too often, we don't first ask, how will this idea benefit the current residents? How will it affect the city? And will it require more FTEs? When money is on the table, there are always strings attached. People have agendas that they want you to own as your own. Many folks play the zero-sum game. Put yourself on a higher level and don't play it. At this level of government, I have found the influence of money has actually become obscene. Don't sell your souls. My fifth wish for you, have fun, those of you that are remaining. Play fair with one another. Be there for one another. All of us are dealing with our current environment the best we know how. It's a difficult time for everybody personally. Extend grace to one another and always be appreciative and humble that people thought enough of you to put you here. Very few people have this opportunity. Enjoy this unique time in your lives. And last, I appreciate the opportunity to have served with all of you. I have learned from each of you. For those of you who are not coming back, enjoy your new opportunities and God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor.
How about me?
Go ahead, Counselor Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor Paul, for allowing me to say thanks to Lakewood. I have a long list of people that I want to thank. After three years on the Lakewood Advisory Commission, three years on Planning Commission, and now eight years on City Council, my term is ending, and I've loved every minute. First and most important is to say thank you to all the people who supported my candidacy and voted for me, walked and knocked and made the eight years possible. I hope I've represented Ward Five well and done exactly as you asked. Thank you to my mentors, Kathy Stapleton, Sue King, Tom Quinn, Diana Wilson, and Steve Burkholder. You have taught me much. A very special thank you to Kathy Hodson and her staff for all they do for us. They, they've reminded me of meetings, helped me find the necessary information that I needed and guided me. Thank you very much, Kathy. There are so many other departments that have done such a great job for the city of Lakewood, and they really are our silent warriors. We don't get to say thank you very often, but I want every single staff person on the city to know that you are appreciated. We value what you do, and we know you work hard every day, all day long. To council, I wanted to say thank you for the things you've taught me. Number one, to listen, to learn, to ponder, and to read your packet. Number two, politics creates strange friendships. We can be on the same side for one issue and still have opposing visions on another issue. And that's okay. A difference of opinion is healthy. We just need to come to compromise and be able to move forward for our residents. Number three, when the tribe speaks, move on. Don't hold a grudge. That's an important one to know. Number four, we all have strengths and weaknesses. Number five, less is better. When discussing an issue, make it brief, to the point, and don't repeat. Number six, remember that we represent all the residents of our wards, not just the ones that voted for me. Number seven, and probably the most important thing that I've learned, is that we all love Lakewood. We love our neighborhoods, and we love the wards that we live in. I also want to thank my family that listened to me after long, long meetings, walked with me, attended events, and watched meetings on TV. My family has been the reason why I wanted to serve in Lakewood, to make it a better place to live, work, and play. So far, they all live here in Lakewood, and I hope that stays that way, but I don't know. I sure hope it does. Finally, and probably most important, I want to say thank you to my husband Doug. He has listened intently to all the meetings, then allows me to discuss the meeting all over again and, and has been my sounding board and my rock. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate that. He's really taught me and urged me to be a better person. I want to say thank you for all these options, and thank you for the time that I've served on council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Mayor Protem, Counselor Labir, anything? Counselor Labir?
Sure. Well, I'll just give a quick thanks. I want to thank the staff for always being so graceful and pleasant to be around, especially with these challenging meetings that you've been witness to. I, I figure I'll leave the rest of my comments for the next meeting, but I just wanted to give a shout out to you guys and give a shout out to the council. I appreciate all the work we've worked on, we've done together. We've done a lot of good things. And I think I'll, I'll have more to share at the next meeting. I have some time to think more about it. So thanks, appreciate it.
Thanks, Counselor. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I'll echo those comments and those that have been made. Obviously, thank you to staff who, you know, collectively gets called staff, but oftentimes we forget that it's what, over 800 people? Whether it's the patrolman on the street or people in finance or people wherever, and they're oftentimes called staff, which is unfortunate, because you wish that you would refer to them by their names, even though I guess that's somewhat impossible. But it is that double-edged sword, because oftentimes we refer to staff as a, you know, the catch-all. When something goes wrong, we just say, well, it must be staff's fault. Which is unfortunate, because I think that, you know, these are people that come in every day and are trying to do their best, just like the rest of us are trying to do in our jobs. So I think if there's one thing I regret is not being tougher on that and pushing back, where I thought staff was being unfairly treated. And certainly, criticism is always warranted. Throw a lot of criticism at me all the time. That's fine. And staff members oftentimes, just like any of us in our jobs, might deserve that criticism. But like I've always said, and one of those quotes I love to say is, we should have a sign on council chambers that says, you know, go hard on the issues but soft on the people. So that when you walk in and we can debate policy and this and that, when it comes to just being human to one another, even if we disagree, and even if it feels personal, we should strive to not make it that way. And when somebody maybe steps over that line, we say, well, wait a minute. Look at the sign that's above our door that says we don't do that. But anyway, I, I, you know, I definitely want to say thank you to all my colleagues, including those But anyway, I, I, you know, I definitely want to say thank you to all my colleagues, including those that aren't here with us. Uh, Pete Royball for sure, and Dana Gootwine as well. They were fantastic. Um, Pete was certainly, uh, made me laugh a lot, especially when he seated me next to him. Um, so that was a lot of fun. And so, thank you to all of you that are here. Um, and certainly, I'm, I'm going to say thank you the most to Barb. Um, I think that, you know, she is a fantastic counselor, taught me a great deal. Um, we had a lot of challenges, you know, legislative wise that we've overcome, and so she was there for me when I need it and people were bringing signs and everything else at us, but, you know, we were there. And, uh, thank you to all of you again, colleagues, for that, because even though that was a really tough time that we had there and turn of 2020, we came together and had even a unanimous vote on probably one of the more contentious issues we've ever had in the city. And that was fantastic that we all pulled together with that. So with that, um, I along with Jacob, I'll probably thank, uh, a bunch more people when, uh, we're in person, because that seems a little more real. But, um, thank you to everyone and again, one more time, thank you to all of you, my colleagues. Uh, it's been a fun for yous.
Thank you. Thank you all for sharing that and for taking the time and certainly those words of wisdom. Um, we will again have a little bit of an opportunity in a couple of weeks and and say our final farewells. So with that, we will move into general business. Is there anything under general business this evening?
I can't find my hand, but I do have something, so I apologize. I'm speaking way out of turn. Oh, there it is. Okay, I have it now. Um, I do have something under general business and kind of comes to what I was just speaking about. Um, and I think what others have spoken, certainly Counselor Johnson spoke to it a bit about, um, some of the divisiveness that we've had, and I think we've heard over the past couple of months, all these things about conflict of interest and uncertain votes. And, uh, specifically with Counselor Springsteen and some, you know, i- is she conflicted? Should she recuse? And I think that that's caused even more division among us, and it's really been extremely unproductive for the body, because this body is not the best arbiter of whether things should be recused or whether there's a conflict or not. Um, however, there is a body that is designed to do exactly that, that could perhaps take it out of this council's hands. Um, especially a new council who needs to get things done and not argue about conflicts. Um, but in CRS 2418.5101, there is a Colorado Independent Ethics Commission whose existence is to issue advisory opinions on ethics issues exactly like the one that has been talked about. So, rather than, you know, however long it's going to take of back and forth and sometimes sniping and, and getting into all this personal stuff, I think that this council should send those issues. We know what the factual basis is and say, look, here's the facts. Is there any reason to recuse on certain types of votes? If there is, please just give us the advice so that we don't have to deal with this. Um, I think that's the best way to handle it. So that was my motion, was to, uh, send this along to that Colorado Independent Ethics Commission and get their advice on what to do in that particular conflict. And I think that way, the next council can be productive. It's better for, uh, the folks on council, um, and that way it won't be so divisive. That was my motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Counselor Abel.
Yes, I'm, a couple of things, uh, concern me here, one of which is the, uh, no notice to the public of a, uh, proposed motion. I can live with that. The, uh, other thing is though, I believe the Colorado Ethics Commission uh, only deals with complaints involving, uh, non-home rule cities. Is that correct, uh, Ms. McKinney Brown?
Oh, there I am. No, that, that is not correct. The Colorado Constitution de- uh, develops the Independent Ethics Board and it allows for local governments to pass a, basically it's an ordinance adopting local ethics rules and to, to, uh, state that they, that the local government will be acting under its own ethics rules. That's been an ongoing conversation with this city council, but this city council has never passed that ordinance, adopting its own ethics rules. So at this point, as far as I can tell, we're, uh, Lakewood is still bound by the constitutional mandate.
Right. Well, for four or five years now, we've been trying to get, uh, or there are some of us that have been trying to get an ethics, uh, code put together, but, uh, it keeps falling through the cracks. So, uh, I think I would prefer that we do our own as opposed to, uh, going with the state, uh, statutes, but that's okay. Uh, you know, we can do that another time and, uh, certainly would not, oppose this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Springsteen?
Well, I, 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 you know, I, I think that's a great idea, but I, I have a question about h- how do we determine as a council which things go before that commission? Because what ends up happening always on this council is that the minority opinion um, is treated as if, uh, there's some kind of um, ethics issue behind it. And the majority opinion is treated as if there's nothing wrong. And so Counselor Skilling, the, the issue I brought up uh, about the selection of the city attorney, and by the way, I was not attacking the city attorney. I was attacking the process of choosing the city attorney last year. And the fact that I was presented with a letter of intimidation to not participate in that process just an hour before the executive session, even though my understanding is that letter was rendered several days earlier. And my understanding is that you were involved in, in, um, soliciting that letter. And so, and you and Counselor Beta, I understood. So how is it that two counselors and whoever on staff is able to, um, uh, set aside a lot of money in our budget to render a legal opinion about what another city counselor without approval of city council? It, it's concerning to me that, that we have this process where we can silence minority opinions in that way. And so my concern about what you're bringing up is that this is just another way to, um, to silence those minority opinions. And, um, you know, and again, I want to say, because people tried to twist my words on this and I want you to know this, Allison, that I was not attacking you directly. I don't even know if you knew anything about it. But I am attacking the process by which we chose a new city attorney and kept one of the city counselors' voices silent by using intimidation tactics, and I don't even know exactly how it happened or who did it. But, um, I, I, I think that's wrong and I think that's what I hear when you're talking about, um, uh, trying to address these issues that way. I do think that there must be healthier ways for us to address each other and deal with each other. And for instance, um, Counselor Franks, you don't just go on and admonish another counselor without knowing the facts and without at least picking up the telephone and saying, hey, what were you talking about? Let's talk through the issues. You should, you should be a little more professional than that. But, um, you know, I, 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 I feel like this issue of conflict of interest and ethics and so forth is coming up in this way that is meant to silence certain voices, and that is my concern. And by the way, I'm going to say one more thing. I am not representing anybody who has a lawsuit against this city. I want to make that clear. Thanks.
So, yeah, uh, I appreciate that this is just, it's not an ordinance, it's not a resolution, it's an ask for an advisory opinion. And it would be better if we did have something in play. It's always a wild card when you throw things to the state. But to, I think Counselor Springsteen's point, she just laid out very articulately that this is why we need it. Because this is causing problems with who can participate and how, and even a ruling from a federal judge that talked to some of these issues. So, you know, what's best is if we're going to try to move forward and work together. You know, I hate reading this conflict piece at every meeting. Certainly not something that I want to have to read, and if we had a better understanding of what and how, it's a third party, it's not council, it's not politics. It's a body that knows nothing about us just based upon the facts of what we're dealing with. Counselor Johnson?
What exactly are we going to be voting on? Number one, and number two, I'm not comfortable with doing this our last meeting. Um, we've already spent now fifteen minutes again on, uh, on an issue that is just dividing us more and more. What are we, what are we voting on exactly?
So Mayor Pro Tem, and you may want to engage, your hand was up before I spoke, but this is asking for an advisory letter from the, I forget the official title as to, uh, if there, and what are conflicts related to, um, counselors' participation. Mayor Pro Tem, do you want to be more succinct?
Well, I mean, look, it's pretty straightforward. We've heard from either constituents, other members on this council. We've had these discussions that there, there is potentially a conflict of interest with whether, I guess now it's former representation, whatever it is, that's the part I don't want to go into. I don't want to get into, well, were you part of doing this and you did this because you're trying to silence me? That's what I'm trying to avoid. I'm just saying, once and for all, just take that set of facts, pitch it off to a, a commission. That's what they do. They make it, they give governing bodies advice on, this is how you should handle this situation. Now it's not political. Now we don't have to spend Counselor Johnson fifteen minutes on this. Because are we saying this isn't going to keep coming up? That magically after tonight, it's poof, going to be gone? So that's what I'm saying, is that it's incumbent upon us, if we talk the game about trying to be less divisive and trying to heal and move forward and get a good, let's just be done with it. New council comes on, they don't have to deal with this anymore. It works best for everybody. I mean, if, if you don't want to send it there, fine, then just don't vote for it or don't get consensus on it, then fine. But I think this is incumbent upon us. This has been an issue that we've been grappling with for months and months and months and months. This seems to be the best way to do it. It's the fairest for everybody. There's no politics, there's no anything. We just give it to that advisory commission and then the next council moves forward. Otherwise, the next council gets seated and we resolve nothing. And to Counselor Springsteen's point, I think this is the healthiest way to do it. You take out a lot of these personalities, you take out any grudges, any personal animus, and you just give it to that commission. And then if they say, well, you can do this, this, and this, and someone's got a problem with it, well, so, too bad. We sent this to the Ethics Commission and they said this is fair game. You can vote on this all day long. Simple. That's what I'm saying. Send it to a third party.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson, follow up, and then I have Counselors Labir, Harrison, Bita.
Right. I appreciate where you're coming from, Counselor Skilling, but you and I will not be here next time. And we are, this is our last meeting. To bring this kind of thing up on the last meeting, I don't think it's appropriate. There will be a new council, they'll have a new culture. And, uh, let them have a chance to have a healthier culture than what we've got.
Counselor Labir?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I agree with Counselor Skilling. I think this is the kind of thing, this advisory type opinion could be instructive to a future council to help set them up for success, uh, and having a more constructive dialogue. Uh, I personally used one of these commissions, uh, before, when, before I ran for council. As many of you know, I work for another government. Uh, so I've used one of these ethics commissions to sort of get their advisory opinion on whether or not I should be uh, seeking office for city council. I don't, I think it's super harmless. Um, obviously a council could do what, whatever they wanted to with that recommendation. They can throw it in the trash or they can uh, listen to it and, and use it as some sort of guidance. Um, it's an opinion and it's from a body that, uh, spends a lot of time thinking about these type of things. So, uh, I don't think it would do any harm and I'd be supportive of it. Thanks.
Counselor Harrison and Counselor Bita.
I would agree with, uh, Counselor Labir's, uh, remarks that they, the future council could accept or reject the findings, but at least, um, send this off and get a second opinion, so to speak, um, that doesn't, um, have all of the feelings and, and whatnot involved in this council. And then future council, if they like it, great. If they don't like it, so be it. Thank you.
Counselor Bita?
I have to agree with Counselor Johnson on this. I don't really like having then presented this with the, at the eleventh hour of our last meeting, uh, without any information on this process. I'm concerned about what sort of precedent this set. We, this was set. We've never done this before, apparently. Uh, I'm hearing that we're not bound by it. I don't know that. Um, I need to, I need to know exactly what, you know, how, how we're bound by it, if we're not by, bound by it, why? I'm, I'm not familiar with, with the statute you referred to. So there's a lot of questions there. I would prefer to send this to, uh, staff, have, have our legal staff particularly take a look at it and see what the legal implications are of doing this. And it may be a good idea. I don't know. I, it, I mean, it sounds good on, 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 on paper. I'll, I'll grant you that. It sounds pretty good. I'm just not ready to act on it at, at this point, um, on such short notice. So I would either, uh, either vote against it or if you want to amend your motion and ma- ma- send it to staff for further review and recommendation. Um, I could go along with that.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think everybody has weighed in. All right, is there a consensus to move forward on the motion? And again, this would be a letter that would be drafted by staff to ask for, um, guidance on this. So that passes six ayes, three nays, the nays being Bita, Johnson, and Springsteen. Okay, we'll go into council reports by ward. Is there a ward that wants to go first? It looks like, Ward Two, Jacob, go ahead.
Why not? Um, well, I just want to mention, we're not having our ward meeting, uh, this November. And Counselor Vincent wanted me to let everyone know that we will not be having a ward meeting in December. Uh, so we'll see you next year. I'm looking forward to being there as a, a concerned citizen. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Ward Three, please. No record.
I think they already, sorry, Mike, do you want to go first?
No, no, go ahead.
I, I think I already said a lot of the comments I was going to make, and the main thing was that I, I really wanted to clarify uh, that my comments about the process of selecting the city attorney a couple of weeks ago were about my concerns with the hiring process. And, um, And um, and tactics that were used to keep me from participating in that process. And I'm sorry if I was not clear about my meaning, but, but that was the issue. Um. I also wanted to say, and I've al- already alluded to this, that um. You know, I really wish that councillor Franks, instead of weighing in on comments without knowing the facts. Would have called me to ask me what happened. And uh, that to me, it's unprofessional to make. Uh, it makes me question why she always sides with the people responsible for these improprieties and intimidation tactics. Instead of siding with the citizens, because at one point when she was elected. She was elected on that basis for siding with the citizens. Instead of being manipulated by staff. And I, I would hope that we could start out with, with a new kind of um. Uh, council when we, when we get the new people on council. Um, where we could at least communicate with each other. Um, and um. You know, and I also wanted to just say that uh, uh. That meeting was very concerning as well. Because the mayor and councillor Franks set me up and gave me no opportunity to respond last week. So they demanded an apology, but then didn't let me speak. And actually ended the meeting early as I had my hand up. And you know, these are just petty juvenile games to hoard the power. By silencing the minority, by silencing others that they don't agree with. And I, and I find that to be discriminatory. And I, I feel that we are sort of in third grade. When we're playing these keep away, you, you don't get to talk games. And bullying anybody who fails to fall in line with the bully tactics. And I, I just think we can do better. And I really hope. With this new council that, that will have people on board who are willing to um. To support that free discourse, independent thought. Um. Uh, and hopefully when we go back to in-person meetings as well. Where the mayor can't just uh, mute and end the meeting whenever he wants, when people are trying to. Say, hey, we're not having the Ward Three meeting this month. Um, I mean, hopefully we can, we can get back on track. And, and thank you councillor Johnson for. Your thoughts in that regard, because I really hope that we can go back to some professionalism in that way. Thanks.
No report.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, word four, please.
Thanks, Mayor Paul, appreciate that. Um, and councillor Springsteen, I did wanna thank you for clarifying your comment about the process. I do think that is important to do, so I really do wanna acknowledge and tell you that I appreciate you doing that. Um, you know, obviously there is a long history here and that was not the first time where there had been an incident. There's no need to go back and to uh, re, you know, relive all of that. But again, it was not a first experience. I had been accused of things on camera that were not true and were uh, verified in the. Email evidence. So I, I absolutely appreciate you clarifying that. Um, and I did want to just uh, reiterate to the public that what my last comments, the last two paragraphs were. I wrote, all of council has the opportunity and privilege to raise up the voices of our constituents. We owe it to them to be prepared, to be thoughtful, to be professional and to be truthful. And when we miss the mark to apologize when warranted and do better next time, that isn't too much to ask. Those were my comments. I appreciate that you have indicated that you would accept a phone call from me. So I certainly will outreach in the future if there are um, uh, opportunities to clarify items. Um, I also wanted to let Ward Four know that given the upcoming election and with the transition period. Coupled with the fact that there's only one city council meeting in November, there will not be a November Ward Four meeting. Um, and so, but if you do have a local matter that you would like to discuss, certainly please reach out to me directly. I certainly want to engage on that. I also want to uh, make sure that our community is aware that with the new council coming on board. Um, and plus this is something that we do every year, there will be an annual planning meeting. And so there's been some talk tonight about what, what we have people who come and speak before us. And who raise issues that, that they would like to see moved forward. That annual planning meeting, that is that opportunity. To uh, to kind of document what those asks are, kind of be very specific about, do you see it being an ask that needs more study? Do you see it being an ask that needs to be a resolution or an ordinance? So that's what the annual planning meeting's for. So um, I would like all of our Ward Four constituents to certainly reach out to me. If there are things that you think I should be championing during that annual planning meeting, I am absolutely happy to uh. To listen to that and see if there's an opportunity to take some of those things forward to that very important meeting. Where we do tend to plan out the things for the year, the big wins and the things that we're trying to achieve. And lastly, I wanted to say to Mayor Pro Tem, Skilling, um. What an absolute um, honor it has been and a pleasure to work with you. Um, I am going to miss working with you. Um, your leadership will be deeply missed. Um, and so I just, I will take the opportunity to the next meeting, I'm sure to say the same things. But you have been a mentor and a friend and somebody who I believe has brought such value to this council. And uh, thank you for serving.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
A wise man once said just a moment ago, no report.
Alright, word five?
Well, somehow we are going to have a Ward Five meeting on November sixth. Um, it will be a presentation by Andrea Gelfuso Getz about her anti-idling. And just a general get to meet your new councillors, uh, because theoretically, they will have been elected by that point in time. Not necessarily certified, but elected. So um, we'll just have a, a good old. Um, everybody gets to meet everybody and then go from there. Thank you.
Word one?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Raimi, I'll defer to you if you like.
I have no report.
Okay. Uh, we will not be having a Ward One meeting in November. Uh, and uh. I hope that our council relationships are more uh. More sincere and less fiery uh, uh, when the new council convenes. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, couple of quick announcements. Uh, vote. But maybe don't mail your ballot now. I think we've kinda hit that date where it's too late to mail. Uh, you can certainly drop at plenty of drop boxes throughout the city. And I think you can go, there's an election page on Lakewood.org as well as the county to find out all that information. Not only is there a. Uh, council race, but there's judges as well as a tax question for Lakewood. And then of course, some other things for the state. So please get those ballots in and uh, make your voice heard. Pretty cool to see in the newspaper, a lot of love on the Sunday Post for the city of Lakewood with Camp Christmas. And um, driving down Spirit Day, there's banners promoting Camp Christmas. And then I was in Cherry Creek today at a hotel and there were handouts promoting Camp Christmas. So this is certainly. Uh, gone beyond Lakewood and a lot of great press, so I hope it's a, a great success and a lot of creative folks behind it. Also really cool article about West Colfax and uh, Casbonita and kinda what could. And, and, and is starting to take place. And really goes back to that long vision. None of this stuff has happened overnight. Think the, the envisionment of an arts district started all the way back with Steve Berkholder. And so that's some time ago and, and it's been a, a tough, long road. Still a lot of work to do, but pretty cool to see things starting to come into place. Um. Continue to work uh, on behalf of the city and all the municipalities in the state on the Affordable Housing Subcommittee. Actually is a lot of, lot of time. It's over four or five hours a week looking at. How best to spend this four hundred million dollars and what priorities. And then we will turn those over to the state and see. If they concur or don't, or what they do from there. But. I have learned a lot and a lot of different things regarding housing and affordability. And I think you see it every day. And you hear about it from your constituents. And it's tough, it's really tough for so many people. So hopefully we can try to make a difference. And as it gets colder, I think we continue to be reminded of homeless. And homelessness in our community. I know the city's working really hard. And there was an article about Littleton and Inglewood and Sheridan also kinda taking this approach of all the cities working together, but. A lot of need, a lot of hurt, and I think. And, and hopeful that council will continue to move forward and find meaningful, meaningful solutions for those that are homeless. And um, try to get some help. And last but not least, on a really cool note. Uh, councillor Abel and I had the opportunity to go to the ribbon cutting of Gigi's Playhouse. Which is a really cool program for kiddos with Down Syndrome. And uh, was so amazing to see these, these young men and women and uh, their parents. And, and what a wonderful. Thing to have in our city. And they do a lot of programming for enrichment, school and everything from pre. Preschool all the way up. And so we're thrilled that they chose the city of Lakewood, even though they say it's Denver, it is Lakewood. And I did not realize that uh, the Down Syndrome programs have some of the least amount of funding in the country. And so that was kind of an eye opener. So if you're interested, check them out. And uh, they're always uh. Wanting to have people learn more about their program and actually have offered their space to the city. Um, and to council members if you ever wanna have meetings at the Playhouse to go see them. So. With that, we will adjourn this meeting at eight thirty seven. And we're gonna come right back into. Lakewood Reinvestment Authority meeting, which I will call to order, uh, the special meeting. Of the Lakewood Reinvestment Authority on Monday, October twenty twenty one, October twenty fifth, twenty twenty one. At eight thirty eight P M. For those that wish to weigh in tonight, your number is seven two zero. Seven zero seven, two six nine nine. Webinar ID is nine two four. Five two nine four, three nine five eight pound. You'll press pound once again. If you wish to raise your hand, press star nine and star six to unmute. Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Paul?
Here.
Abel?
Here.
Bita?
Here.
Franks?
Here.
Harrison?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Labir?
Here.
Skilling?
Here.
Springsteen?
Here.
Vincent? You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. I'll now open public comment on the uh, special meeting of the Lakewood Reinvestment Authority. Is there anybody who wishes to speak, please press star nine? Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment. I will ask. Point of clarification, are we approving minutes and the resolution together?
We'll do the minutes first.
Alright, so I'll um, ask for, please read in the approval minutes. Weird, please.
Item four, approval of minutes, Lakewood Reinvestment Authority, Lakewood Reinvestment Authority Board Meeting, July twelfth, twenty twenty one. Lakewood Reinvestment Authority Board Meeting, August ninth, twenty twenty one.
Alright, any questions or comments on the minutes? Please have a motion, Commissioner Skilling.
I move for the approval of the L R A meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion is second, a discussion. Seeing none, please cast your votes. It passes uh, nine ayes, nine ayes, zero nays. Will the clerk please read item five into the record?
Item five, resolution L R A twenty twenty one dash three. Authorizing a revised budget for the year twenty twenty one for the Lakewood Reinvestment Authority. And further adopting the annual budget for the Lakewood Reinvestment Authority for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of January twenty twenty two. And ending December thirty one, twenty twenty two, estimating the amount of money to be derived from taxing, permitting, financing and setting forth the appropriations of each fund.
Okay, thank you. There is a presentation. We have the L R A Director, Mr. Smith. Uh, who will give a quick overview. And then again, we'll have public comment on this resolution as well. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. I didn't, no, I was, I was jumping in, it took me just a minute to get involved there. Um, that's very short presentation. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, we've had an opportunity to talk about the budget on a couple of uh, different meetings ahead of time. Uh, we had a study session, we did a short presentation at the uh, original law public hearing, or I should, I should say the first public hearing for the uh, city budget. And uh, we are at the official public hearing for the L R A budget. We need to meet as a separate group. We're a separate entity of government. Um, and uh, we only need one public hearing for this. So this is the official public hearing for this particular uh, budget. It's very workmanlike budget. And we talked uh, several times about um, projects that will need to be uh, talking about in the future. Those larger projects will have to come forward as budget exceptions in the future and programs that are more fleshed out and developed so that. Uh, the dollars are being allocated in the uh, appropriate areas. But right now, the budget that's before you is a very uh, workmanlike budget. And to make sure that we cover all of the expenses of all four of the uh, urban renewal areas that are under the Lakewood Reinvestment Authority's approval. So with that, I will just simply say that the uh, resolution twenty twenty one dash three is before you. And it asks for the approval of the twenty twenty one revised budget and the twenty twenty two proposed budget.
Thank you, sir. Now open public comment. Is there anybody that wishes to speak on resolution L R A twenty twenty one dash three?
No one has their hand up.
Thank you, Ms. Alzar. Uh. Commissioner Skilling, would you please make a motion?
I move for the adoption of resolution L R A dash twenty twenty one dash three.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your votes. And that passes uh, nine ayes, zero nays. Commissioners, thank you very much. Mr. Smith, appreciate that uh, presentation, well done. And uh, thank everybody for their time and their comments. And certainly their service tonight to the community. And we will adjourn this meeting and be done with everything until mid-November. Believe the twentieth or twenty second. So thank you all very much. We'll adjourn at eight forty three.